It's four o'clock, we'll be starting our regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, roll call, Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Michael Pacheco, Commissioner Bobby Carrillo,
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero,
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez,
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina,
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores,
Present.
We have a call.
Motion to excuse the members?
Second.
Then move.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved unanimous.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone will bow their head. Gracious Creator, as we gather in service to our city, we give thanks for the opportunity to lead with wisdom and care. Bless our community with health in mind, body, and spirit. May every decision made in this room reflect a deep commitment to the well-being of all of our neighbors. Together, may our city grow stronger, healthier, and more connected. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
Right, under proclamations, we have proclamation two eight proclaiming October fifth through eleventh, twenty twenty five as fire prevention week. This time, we're going to call Chief Pilate and his staff up.
You're good, chief.
Mayor and Commissioner Pilate Rodriguez, Fire Chief for the City of Far Fire Department. As you all know, this week is fire prevention week, and so we've got some activities lined up for the month of October. They'll be announcing them a little later with a little more detail. But we've got the staff here. Information on behalf of the department, so.
Thank you, go ahead Danny.
Yes, sir. Well, welcome guys, and thank you for everything you do and all the lives savings that you have done, not just simply in fires out, but in crashes, and helping those in need. Whereas the Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the city afar. And whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risk. And whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which is misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three keys, three calls to action. Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand charges without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the twenty twenty-five fire prevention week, the charge into fire safety, lithium-ion batteries in your home serves to remind us that the importance of using charging and recycling lithium-ion batteries is safe to reduce the risk of fires in homes and the communities. Now therefore, I on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez and the Mayor of City of Far, Texas virtual, on him rested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim October fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five Fire Prevention Week.
Mayor Protem, just one quick announcement, kind of related to Fire Prevention Week. This gentleman here to my left is Manuel Renta, who is Deputy Fire Chief and also serves as the Fire Marshal. This week will be his last week of service to the department and the citizens of far. He will be retiring Friday after twenty-six years of service. And, you know, he's been leading the Fire Prevention Bureau. That means he's been leading the charge for the life safety and the public education and the public outreach in our city, which has been very, very effective. And that is shown by zero fire fatalities in the last couple of years. And we have not had any major fires in the city. And so I just want to take this opportunity to wish him well and congratulate him on his retirement and for the service that he provided the city afar. He started as a firefighter, served as a driver, was a lieutenant, he was the Deputy Chief of Operations, and he's rounding out his career as the Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal for the city of far.
Well, congratulations, congratulations. Before I say a few words about Manny, because I've known Manny for a long time, probably way before he was even a fireman. Guys, I want to thank you all for what you all do. I had the honor of being up in Austin with several of you gentlemen, and we were able to, when you all got recognized. And this is a tribute to you chief and them voluntarily wanting to get that extra special training certifications, that they're able to do stuff like that, which in the valley, nobody else has. So the group of men and women that we have here in the city of far consider yourselves unique. And very, very, I know that we're very proud of you because the way you guys, your reflection to the county reflects back on the city. And, you know, it's so proud to be able to say, you know, our guys do this, our ladies do this, the training we have, the camps we have for the young ladies. You don't know how many times women have come up to me and said, that is so awesome, that is really great that you guys recognize, not just everybody, firemen, firemen, no, it's firewomen, or firepersons, I don't know the proper lingo of it. But yeah, I want to thank the ladies and you gentlemen for what you do. Thank you very, very much. And Manny, well, I've known you for a long time back when, I don't think you were a fireman when I first met you and your family, your dad and mom and everybody. So thank you for your service. It's been an honor knowing you. I'm not, you're not, I'm sure you're not going anywhere. I'll see you around, I'm sure, at a different, on a different level. You know, obviously, you'll be retired, almost like me. And so, you know, we'll get together, go have lunch or something. But thank you for your service, and I appreciate you all, appreciate all you all, what you do. If anybody else wants to, yeah, we'd like to take a picture with you all.
Yeah, let's do the bottom one. Actually, no, no, sorry, you're right up there. And I need everybody to, as a group, move to your left. Right there. All right, guys, on me, on three, one, two, three, one more, one, two, and three.
Thank you. The proclamation.
Proclamation. There you go, thank you, brother.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you, bro.
Thanks, man.
All right, next we have item two B, proclamation proclaiming October twenty twenty-five as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have Mario Liscano and Dr. Carlos Sanchez. Some other staff here to present.
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor Protem. And Commissioners, want to thank you for allowing DHR Health to come in and along with Oncology Institute at Renaissance to provide information, awareness, and recognition. Unfortunately, our doctor stayed behind as he is continuing to take care of patients and was not able to do so. But we want to make sure that on behalf of our board of managers, our over seven hundred physicians, over sixty-seven hundred employees, we want to thank you for always being part of this recognition throughout the year. And as we talk about it today, we've had different events in different locations. And as it serves in the city, we want to make sure that our citizens afar understand that this cancer does not discriminate, and it can affect anyone, male or female. So we continue to provide this information in our community. And we want to ensure that we will have some special services that will be available during the month of October and will lead on to November and even to December because of that is somewhat to the need. But thank you so much for this evening, and we hope that you do approve this proclamation.
Whereas breast cancer is a second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second-leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas mammography and X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment are believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested by this cause by DHR Health Physicians, Nurses, and all staff of the Advanced Care Center. And whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope of a better future. And whereas with deep respect, we honor and support those who continue to cope with breast cancer, extend our heartfelt admiration to survivors, and recognize the unwavering efforts of those advocating prevention, awareness, and cure. Now therefore, I, Itza Flores, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We do want to just recognize Amanda Wing, which is our new community outreach coordinator, which provides all the information, not only of breast cancer, but all the cancer support groups that we have throughout the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, next we have item two C, proclamation proclaiming October twenty twenty-five as the one-hundredth anniversary of Trinity Episcopal Church Month. We have members of the congregation here.
This is Reverend Sharon Alexander. I am the rector of Trinity Episcopal Church, which is just a few blocks from here. And we are grateful for the city afar because if it weren't for you all, we wouldn't have that church. The land was donated a hundred years ago from the city. And so that has made you all a good neighbor to us. We just had the Fire Department, they have been such a good neighbor. We had some vandalism a few months ago, and they were incredibly helpful. This is a wonderful city, I am so proud to be part of it and so proud that Trinity is a hundred years old. In a few months, we will be having a big party to celebrate, and all of the city, including you, all will be invited. So we thank you.
That's really amazing because I grew up half a block from the church, Episcopal Church Church, and I lived on Blue Bonnet and Cherokee. So I would walk there to my dad's business every day. So I passed up, and I probably wore out that sidewalk as many times through the sixty-something years that I've lived here in far. So yeah, definitely, yeah, real special. My younger brother of mine attended the school there.
Wonderful.
Back fifty years ago, probably.
Not that long ago, I did too.
Oh, you did too?
I did too.
No, Trinity is blessed to have so many connections, and we really are grateful.
Herbert?
Welcome, Reverend. Whereas Trinity Episcopal Church was established in nineteen twenty-five with its first service held at Far City Hall under the direction of Reverend R.O. McIntosh, rector of the Church of the Advent. And whereas thanks to a property gift from the city of far, the church building was constructed in nineteen twenty-seven at a cost of eleven thousand dollars. October second, nineteen twenty-seven, the Reverend Samuel Capers assumed charge of the parish installed by his father, Bishop William Capers. And whereas the parish was designated as Trinity Episcopal Church of Hidalgo County, part of the diocese of West Texas, and has since served as a place of worship, community, and tradition, including the first wedding uniting Gwendolyn Ganter and Albert Ray Russell, which was described by the McCollum Monitor as a brilliant affair. And whereas over the decades, Trinity has grown in faith and service, adding a children's chapel in the nineteen fifties, complete with handmade furnishings and a child organ still present today. And under the guidance of Reverend W.W. Stewart in nineteen thirty-nine, a Gothic-style stained glass windows were installed, dedicated in nineteen sixty-three, and remain intact as a hallmark of the church. And whereas Reverend Ted Nice, beginning his service in nineteen seventy-eight, together with his wife Martha and church members, established the Far Emergency Food Pantry, which became the foundation for the food bank of the Rio Grande Valley, expanding the church's legacy of service to the community. And whereas in July twenty twenty-four, Trinity Episcopal welcomed its first female rector, the Reverend Canon Sharon Alexander, alongside Senior Warden Gregory B. Dozier and Junior Warden Tricia Parish Munal, continuing its tradition of faith, service, and leadership. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, the mayor of the city of far, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five as the one-hundredth year anniversary of Trinity Episcopal Church. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here we go. Miling, one, two, and three, once again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we're going to call up our EDC Director Victor Perez for item two D, proclamation proclaiming October twenty twenty-five as Manufacturing Month.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and Community Members. I am Letizia Damae, Marketing Director for FAR EDC. And today here with me are Mr. Mario Liscano, he's the Vice Chair for the FAR EDC, Mr. Victor Perez, President and CEO for the FAR EDC, Ms. Belinda Vargas, Career and Technical Education Coordinator, Mr. Mike Willis, Executive Director for STMA. As you all know, October is Manufacturing Month, and it's an opportunity to highlight one of the most important sectors driving our local economy. At the FAR EDC, we know that manufacturing is more than just production. It's innovation, it's high-paying jobs, and the foundation for a strong and competitive economy. This year, we're especially proud to celebrate Manufacturing Month by strengthening partnerships that build our workforce pipeline. Together with PSJA ISD's Career and Technical Education Program and the South Texas Manufacturers Association, we're connecting local students directly with employers, giving them hands-on experience and the skills needed to graduate, career-ready, often with credentials and licenses in hand. By aligning education with industry needs, we're not only preparing the next generation of skilled talent, but also ensuring that manufacturers here in far have the workforce they need to grow and thrive. We're excited about the opportunities ahead and remain committed to supporting our manufacturers and building a strong future for far. Once again, thank you for granting this year's proclamation for Manufacturing Month. And Mr. Mike Willis has a few words to say.
Thank you, thank y'all for your time and support. And we've, the Manufacturers Association was formed about thirty-four years ago, so we've been around for quite some time. I'm so old that I was there when we, the day we started it. But we've had a longstanding relationship and partnership with PSJA School District, South Texas College, FAR City Far and FAR EDC, and others. And we've worked almost the whole thirty-four years on trying to create talent pipelines and work with the schools and educators. Because even back when I was a plant manager, the top priority has always, for our industry's always been finding skilled labor that we need to support it. We're going to see a lot more activity, I think. There's a lot of companies in Mexico that can possibly shift in production to the United States. So I'm probably more optimistic than I've been in years about the manufacturing footprint, growing it along the border here in the near future. Thank you.
Today is Belinda Vargas with PSJA.
Thank you so much again for being our partner. We've been partners for a very long time with manufacturing and the city of far and STC and STMA. I think this is maybe the eleventh or twelfth year. So we thank you for always being there for us as a city and for the EDC for always inviting us. And they, I know they just had a tour of our facility, and we're very impressed with the machinery and the students that we have there, and we're going to have an event coming real soon. Thank you.
Okay, whereas for generations, manufacturing has played a critical role in Texas diverse economy. Texas is home to over twenty-eight thousand manufacturing firms, three hundred seventy-one, which are located in Hidalgo County. And whereas manufacturing in Texas constitutes over eleven point two percent of the total output in the state, totaling three hundred and ten billion dollars in exports of manufactured goods in twenty twenty-three. And whereas manufacturers in Texas employ seven percent of the workforce, an estimated nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand manufacturing employees, including seven thousand in Hidalgo County. And whereas manufacturing in Reynosa, Mexico provides for over forty-six billion dollars of goods across the foreign international bridge comprising ninety-six point two eight percent of the value of total trade. And whereas manufacturers pay millions of dollars annually supporting schools, law enforcement, emergency preparedness, public works, and other essential services, manufacturing jobs enable Texas families to realize the dream of owning a home, sending a child to college, and enjoying a secure retirement with an average weekly wage in Hidalgo County of eleven hundred seventy-three dollars. And whereas National Manufacturing Day is held annually on the first Friday in October, and the month of October is annually celebrated as National Manufacturing Month. Residents are encouraged to support the work of manufacturing companies by purchasing products manufactured in Hidalgo County and in the United States of America. Whereas to celebrate Manufacturing Month, entities across Hidalgo County, including the FAR Economic Development Corporation, South Texas Manufacturers Association, Workforce Solutions, manufacturing companies, cities in the Rio Grande Valley, economic development corporations, colleges, school districts, and others in relevant fields, are partnering to host various events to showcase modern manufacturing technologies and career. Therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of City of Far, Texas, by virtue of authority vested in me on behalf of the mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim October twenty-fifth as Manufacturing Month.
Here we go. Miling, one, two, and three, once again, just one second.
Anybody for public testimony?
No, sir.
Public hearings?
No, sir.
All right, under City Manager's report, we have the City Engineer Report, the information's in your packet. We have Pilate here, if you guys have any questions. Next, we have Udi with City Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, City Commissioners, Udi Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications. For the record, a few recaps before we move on to our events of interest. For this first video, we want to invite Chief Juan Gonzalez, who wants to introduce this first video. And he wants to elaborate on this very nice award that they traveled to San Antonio to go receive. And his mental health unit is also here. So he's going to share a few words on what this award represents.
If you guys want to spread out, so. Commissioners, good afternoon, Dr. Flores, Ms. Rodriguez. For the record, Juan Gonzalez, Director for the Police Department. I also have a part, some part of the team here with me as well. We have Jackie Rodriguez, we have Albert Tejerina, and we have Lenny Longoria with us, all part of the mental health unit. We wanted to come up and just say a little bit about this award that we received. It was through the Governor's Office, through the Committee of People with Disabilities. We had the opportunity, and we're blessed enough, this past weekend to attend the event up in the San Antonio area. We received it on behalf of Greg Abbott, the Governor, and the committee that he supports with not only mental health, but people with disabilities. A part of the work that we've been doing is collaborating also with local nonprofits and agencies and other departments down here in South Texas. So it was pretty awesome to see that South Texas had representation there. it was pretty awesome to see that, uh, South Texas had representation there, uh, in that forum that we had. Uh, I also wanna thank Dr. Flores also for your support on this. I know that it took a collective team effort, kind of, uh, coming together and submitting our application, and we were just blessed enough to have received, uh, the Martha Arbuckle Award. Uh, I'm gonna bring up Jackie Rodriguez, so she can just say a few words also, and she wanted to say something.
Good afternoon. We want to express our deepest gratitude for receiving the Martha Arbuckle Award. Its recognition means much to us, not just as an honor, but as a reflection of the values we hold dear: inclusion, accessibility, and innovation in community engagement. Our Mental Health Alliance meetings have become a space where real conversations are happening, where law enforcement, mental health professionals, and community members come together to listen, learn, and lead meaningful changes. We are truly thankful for this award and for the opportunity to keep building a stronger, more compassionate, and more inclusive community. This recognition inspires us to continue the work, to keep pushing forward, and to never stop improving how we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I can answer any questions if, before, if anybody has before played videos.
How many other applicants were there? Do you know how many? What was the process like in order to receive the?
Uh, we submitted it through the Workforce Solutions down in South Texas, uh, but, um, I don't know, maybe probably more than fifty, hundreds, something like that, applications that were submitted. So, based on our work and what we've done the last two to three years, they reviewed it, and, uh, we're fortunate enough to be selected.
And do you know the, the person it's named after? Is it significant for some type of, some reason?
Yes, it is. It has, uh, it's through the Lex Freedance Awards, and, um, everyone has some sort of, um, either collaborated, or it's been a part of an organization regarding persons with disabilities. This award, though, is through the Governor's Committee of Persons with Disability Members. Yeah, so, uh, what was pretty unique also was that we had, um, first, we were the only law enforcement, uh, agency that received it, but there was nonprofits, there was, uh, businesses, business owners there. Uh, one, one that caught my attention was, it was, it was called, uh, Mermaid Cafe, and it's in San Antonio. Uh, that cafe was recognized, uh, due to the fact that seventy percent of the workforce, uh, is hired through persons with disabilities or special needs. Uh, and thirty percent are, uh, hired, uh, seventy percent are of special needs and, and, and through people with disabilities, so they were recognized for their efforts and what they're doing. Uh, and, and, uh, there was a couple other also agencies that, uh, received recognition, all for their, their work and collaboration on, 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 on the work that they do for their communities, so. Thank you.
...and opportunity. The FAR Police Department's Mental Health Unit accepting the Martha Arbuckle Award at the Texas Higher Ability Employer Forum and Lex Freedan Employment Awards in San Antonio.
We're really excited because it's actually the seventy-fifth anniversary for the Governor's Committee on People with Disabilities. The Martha Arbuckle Award is going to the FAR Police Department Mental Health Unit, and we're super excited about that. We're just in awe. Um, when we got in the nomination, we were really impressed with all the incredible work you guys are doing to work with your community, and we're hoping today that others can see that and model it in their community as well.
FAR PD is the only police agency in the state to earn the recognition, presented by the Texas Governor's Committee on People with Disabilities.
We, we thank the community for, um, you know, being there for us. We thank Workforce Solutions and, um, the City of FAR Commissioners, our Mayor, our, the Chief of Police for allowing us to have a mental health unit within the department and see how important mental health is for, um, you know, the state and our, our city, our community. Uh, we, we are thankful, we're humbled to receive this award, and, you know, we, we just continue doing the work that we're doing.
The unit was honored for their contributions to the Mental Health Alliance and collaboration with Workforce Solutions Lower Rio Grande Valley.
We chose the FAR Police Department for the Martha Arbuckle Award because we saw how innovative they are, how inclusive they are, how they advocate to the community, and how they partner with different organizations throughout the area to make sure that everything is seamless and that it's inclusive, and everything is great.
Through work with local schools like Pathways to Independence and community events such as Stig Byme, the Mental Health Unit going above and beyond making sure every part of our community is served through outreach and support.
They come in every day, and it's like the day one when we started. We still have the ambition. We're pushing forward, and, 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 uh, our award is to see that, uh, people get the help and the resources that, that they need. Uh, it's our work. It's something that we love doing, and, and we'll continue to, to do the best that we can at it, not only for, for our community, but for our region in South Texas.
This is a great opportunity for other police departments or other organizations to see what is being done with the City of FAR Police Department and their Mental Health Unit, and maybe this is a way for them to connect with them so they can start something on their own.
Congratulations, guys, again. Appreciate you all. You wanna join Commission up here?
Congratulations. Great. Great work.
Congratulations once again, our Police Chief and the Mental Health Unit for that. Our next video is the Leadership Day at FAR One. The Leadership Day took place, uh, I believe a week ago. This was under Zera Coaching. Zera Coaching is a platform in the Rio Grande Valley that assists and helps, um, our community. They serve as a platform for mentors, leaders, and a support system. And, uh, this year, actually, our City Manager, Dr. Jonathan Flores, was invited to be part of the panelist. He was invited to be a guest speaker for Leadership Day, and we have a recap of that.
So we are hosting Leadership Day Conference. This is our third annual. Zera Coaching is an organization that thrives on helping people grow, leaders grow, developing leaders, and adding value to them through, uh, leadership development, workshops, team-building activities. So some of the things that are being discussed is increasing communication, building trust with your team, and being mission-oriented.
So as soon as I heard about it, I thought, I said, "Sign me up." I know the speakers are gonna be amazing. I mean, the City of FAR is doing an amazing job putting this together for us with Zera Coaching, and I manage a lot. It's a skill that we all need to learn about and continue growing within ourselves to be able to continue leading other people.
To be able to learn not only from the other distinguished group of speakers that were on the panel alongside me, you know, was, was a blessing. And every day, we have the opportunity to learn and pivot and adjust to different things that are going on in the world, right? So we have to continue to be lifelong learners and continue to invest in ourselves so that we can better serve our organizations. And to me, that's why leadership is so important.
Just to learn from these individuals, their experiences that they have, is just really insightful. You can really grab that information and knowledge and imply it to other industries. For example, real estate, or growing your, your organizations and being able to inspire and motivate and influence individuals in a way that makes positive change for the community.
As you can see, it was a full house. It was a very successful event, and we hope that they continue doing these workshops and conferences at FAR One. Our next video is the much anticipated IKEA Grand Opening that took place last week at the FAR Town Center, and we have a recap of that. Very successful event.
And it's official. Welcome to the world of IKEA. Hundreds wait in line to experience the first store in the Rio Grande Valley.
This has been in the making for a while. For the IKEA family, know that the residents of the Rio Grande Valley have always wanted better and bigger things for their families. And we're just so proud, and we're, we're humbled, the fact that as a city, we're able to participate in that endeavor so you guys can have this great experience.
We have so much to offer the Rio Grande Valley customer. We're really excited to be here. I would say it's an amazing immersive experience. We have a, a wallet for everyone, uh, so lots of things that are at affordable prices that everybody should be able to take home today. We love to be a part of our community and every, every community we go into, so it was really important that we capture the essence of the Rio Grande Valley.
I'm originally from Houston, so I'm used to going to IKEA all the time. I just moved out here a, a year ago, so I have some, you know, familiarity with IKEA, so I'm so excited because everything, everything's a great price. I'm definitely stopping here today, getting a few things off of my list.
The City of FAR has been one of the most helpful and progressive, energetic cities in helping us and being very pro-development and trying to improve the city.
The Rio Grande Valley, and especially the City of FAR, is a tremendous community that has a lot of opportunity for a retailer like this. Not only within the Rio Grande Valley, but you have a bi-national customer base. You are Mexico and America here, and there is a tremendous opportunity here, and that doesn't even consider everyone that's coming from the north with the snowbird population as well.
I think anytime that we have businesses that, um, increase the, the quality of life for our community, such as IKEA, you know, they're all about sustainability. They offer affordable products to our community, and that is something that we want our community to be proud about. And I think we can see that by today's, uh, attendance for, for today's ribbon cutting.
With over eighteen hundred products, there is something for everyone. Stop by and visit IKEA in FAR.
Amazing event once again, and congratulations to all the partners that were out there from EDC, Chamber of Commerce, our team, management directors. It was a very successful event, and, you know, those videos that we've been sharing have, you know, reached thousands of views, not only here in FAR, but throughout the region and other states. So I think that speaks volumes of what we're doing. Our next recap is the Bridge Truck Expo that took place last week. Uh, it was a very successful event. This was hosted at the Burt Ogden Arena in the past. It was held at the FAR Event Center. The Bridge has now shifted this event into the Burt Ogden Arena, and we have recap for this.
My name is Luis Bassan. I'm the Director for the FAR International Bridge, and I wanna welcome you to our second annual truck expo. Vamonos.
Putting the truck industry at the forefront, the FAR International Bridge hosting its second annual truck expo at the Burt Ogden Arena, a one-stop shop for industry professionals to collaborate, network, and learn more about the latest developments in the transportation world. It's the only one of its kind in South Texas.
Having these types of shows, having these types of programs, these types of events, you know, our customers appreciate it, first and foremost, because nobody else is doing it.
The expo, coming at a crucial time, aiming to put a positive spin on some of the industry's biggest challenges.
There's a lot of issues that are affecting the transportation industry, and one of the major follow-ups for us is gonna be, what can we do at the legislative level, starting at the state, and then taking it to the federal level?
The FAR International Bridge working hand-in-hand with the Texas Trucking Association to face these challenges head-on.
By uniting together, we're able to tell the government, this is what we need to be successful so the rest of our state can be successful.
From the truck showcase to the exhibitor hall, job fair, and trade sessions, everyone in attendance left with something.
It really brings an industry together here in, in South Texas. It allows all these different vendors to share what they're doing to support this community. It helps from a commerce side for both sides of the border. And, uh, just that FAR steps up and takes an active role in trying to build that and grow that is so critical, and we're, we're thrilled to be a part of it.
Some of the vendors this year were actually from across the region and even from Houston, Texas, that they showed big interest in being part of this truck expo, so that's great. I know Mr. Luis Bassan is not here today, but his assistant, Javier Martinez, is here if there's any questions regarding the truck expo. No questions? Okay. And so our last video is an invite. We are only days away from our very much expected Avocado Fest, and this is something our team came up with, our FAR Media Department, and it's an invite. Hope you enjoy it.
Hey, y'all. It's Avocado Fest time, right here in the City of FAR. Avocado Fest in the City of FAR. Fun for everyone, whoever you are. Come celebrate the good times, young and old, 'cause avocados are that green gold. It's Avocado Fest, right here in the City of FAR.
The Avocado Festival, October 11th in downtown FAR. A day full of avocado activities. Carnival rides, Jurassic RGV, over one hundred food and market vendors, photo ops, and plenty of avocados. The event kicks off with music on the 956 stage and keeping the celebration going on the main stage, returning favorite Red, a Taylor Swift tribute band, John King, Group of Mistale, and this year's headliner, Easton Corbin. FAR's Avocado Fest this October 11th, the biggest family-friendly event of the year. For more, visit avocadofest.com.
Once again, this event is approaching, and it is free for our community from two to five, and there is a general entrance fee. That's just five dollars after five. So, we can't wait to see everyone joining us at the Avocado Fest this year. Uh, now to our upcoming events, and you have these flyers in front of you. This is part of a national campaign under the Fire Department. I know Chief Pilar just, uh, presented a proclamation. This year's theme, Charge Into Fire Safety. This Fire Fest is happening Thursday, October 16th, right outside of City Hall from six to nine. Many activities and programs that are educational in how to prevent a fire. So, once again, we really encourage our community to join us. We'll have food, you know, vendors. It's a lot of fun. We have this every year, and of course, it's part of a national movement and, and awareness. Our next event is the Red Ribbon Parade. This year, the City of FAR is hosting this parade. This is a traveling red ribbon parade. In the past, Alamo has hosted this, the City of San Juan. This year, it's, uh, the City of FAR, so we're collaborating. This is happening Saturday, October the 18th, kicking off at nine AM. This is starting on West, uh, actually on North Cage, ending at the PSJ Stadium. So, we really encourage people to come out, and once again, this is a drug-free campaign. The message, the involvement, and we really expect a big turnout, so we can't wait to see you. Once again, this is Saturday, October the 18th, and wear red to be in support of this great event. Our Rio Reforestation, it's the 31st. However, for the City of FAR, it's the third annual, so reforestation across the Rio Grande Valley has been happening for over thirty years, but it's the third year that the City of FAR partners up with other organizations, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, of course, our committee, Keep FAR Beautiful. Everyone very involved in making sure this is a successful event. This is happening October 18th. This flyer and all information is up on our Keep FAR Beautiful page. It's happening at the Milagros Track, which is right here in our backyard in South FAR, and this kicks off at eight AM. Last year, we had one thousand volunteers that came out. We're expecting that this year, we're gonna have a bigger and better and just a beautiful turnout with our community. Once again, this is the Rio Reforestation, October 18th. This concludes Events of Interest under City Managers' Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Yudi. All right, next we have our Consent Agenda. Need a motion to remove item 6D and a separate motion to table that item.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Motion.
Do we have a motion to table? Do we have a motion to table?
Yeah. I made a motion to approve.
That was, that was to remove it. Make a motion to table item sixteen. Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second? Second. Second, Commissioner, I mean, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion to table passes. All right, Consent Agenda. All, all items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body, and will be enacted by one motion.
So move.
Taken. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7A, Consideration and Action of Any Unordinance Directing the City Manager to Vacate, Abandon, and Close a 15-foot by 303-foot Utility Easement Consisting of 0.104 of an acre, Located on Lot 1 of the Donia subdivision, FAR Hidalgo County, Texas. First reading.
So move.
Taken. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Item 7B, Consideration and Action of Any Unordinance Directing the City Manager to Vacate, Abandon, and Close a 20-foot by 375.03-foot Utility Easement Consisting of 0.17 of an acre, Located on Lot 1 Border Subdivision, FAR Hidalgo County, Texas. First reading.
So move.
Taken. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7C, Consideration and Action of Any Unordinance Amending Ordinance 0-2017-21 Establishing Requirements For Admin For Administrative Approval Route on All Run-Walk Events and Other Applicable Activities, First Reading.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7D, Consideration and Action of Any Onordnance Amending Ordinance 0-2013-20 Establishing Requirements and Administrative Approval for Open-Air Events or Activities, First Reading.
So move. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7E, Consideration and Action of Any on Resolution Declaring Surplus Items and Equipment and Authorizing the Sale of Such Items.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7F, Consideration and Action of Any on Resolution Allowing Participation with Choice Partners for Cooperative Purchases and Services.
So move. Taken.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7G, Consideration and Action of Any on Resolution Designating a Poet Laureate for the City of FAR. At this time, I'm going to call up Adolfo to tell you guys a little more about that.
So move.
Guys, Commissioners, Jonathan, City Manager, just want to take this time to announce that we have a new initiative to designate a poet laureate for the City of FAR for the fiscal year 2025-2026. This time, we have Amanda Purrier-L, and she can introduce herself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Man, so, born and raised, FAR Texas, all day. I moved to New York, and I came back to the valley, and it's been a crazy year, from a TED Talk to two Grammy submissions that I'm currently on right now. It's been an amazing run this year, and so I thank you guys so much for designating this poet laureate for the City of FAR, which is the first ever. I sleep, eat, and everything you can think, poetry. I've been doing this for 18 years as a ghostwriter, and then I went on to did my poetry album, which has already surpassed 250,000 streams, and I'm just excited about the Grammys and excited about everything they were doing next. And I'm so in love with Buell Central High School. That's where I usually go teach poetry all the time through PSJA. They brought me home, and they took me in there, and they're a reflection of who I was and who I am. So I'm blessed to be home, and I'm blessed to teach anybody and everybody poetry and keep it going poetically. So I thank all of you all here. I thank our guy over here for the library, that's the leader of all books for us, and also the South Texas Women's Poetry Society, who Dr. Carrasco is the person who brought me and nominated me for the position. I was also nominated for the State of Texas Poet Laureate this year. My good friend Octavio beat me, which is great, because we're still in it, from Harlingen, Texas. So thank you guys so much for bringing us out here and doing poetry a thing in the City of FAR, which is everything I represent everywhere I go. Thank you.
Yes, and on Thursday, at the library, from 6:00 to 8:00, we'll have a small ceremony just to celebrate our new poet laureate. And if we could have a picture as well?
Yes.
Present with a plaque.
All right, so we'll need a, we'll need a motion to approve item 7G.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 8A, Consideration and Action of Any on Interlocal Agreement Between the City of FAR and the City of Weslaco for Animal Shelter Services.
Taken.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Taken.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 4:55. Thank you, everybody.